It is exactly 3:30. Jack, you're good to go?
We're good to go.
All right, 3:30 on the dot. I call this meeting to order. The Art in Public Places Committee of the City of Santa Rosa. Jack, would you call roll, please?
I certainly will. Chair Nathanson?
Present.
Vice Chair Kiefer?
Present.
Committee Member Trejo Vasquez?
Present.
And Committee Member Faulkner?
He's present.
Let the record reflect that all committee members are present with the exceptions of Quintero and Azadaria.
And Azadarian is walking in the door. Hey, Nathan. Actually, do we expect Lisa today?
We do not.
Okay. Great, we're all here. Well, I appreciate everybody being here indoors on a beautiful afternoon. Well, try to get through business in an expeditious manner. So, we are moving on to item number five. Oh, no, item number four, sorry. Do we have any modifications to the agenda from staffs?
Yes, thank you, Chair Nathanson. I would like to move department reports from item, from number nine, to after approval of minutes, so making that number seven before scheduled items.
Okay. So noted. Any other changes? Okay, great. Item number five on our agenda is public comments. This is the time when any person may address matters not listed on the agenda, but which are within the subject matter of our jurisdiction. Public may comment on agenda items when the item is called. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, hi. On agenda, hi, I'm Janice Carmen and I'm here scurrying to the meeting today because I'm quite concerned about the hand being removed from the mall. And I don't know, does everyone know about that, that the hand went away? And I remember when it was installed, but I don't remember all the issues around it. And it just happened Friday that I found out about it when it was in the paper. And I think this is a very serious issue for public art. And personally, I was getting ready to try to find out about what happened to the Azawa art from, I don't know, 25 years ago or whatever it was. But there's, there's got to be a history to this, and it was very mysterious and unusual. And I also talked to the Press Democrat about it, and I just find it very disturbing. And I think that it has a lot of effect on future public art, if this is allowed to just transfer the way it has. And I don't want to go into getting into polarized politics on it. But disappearing art is a big issue. And I will state one particular situation I do know personally. I had wanted to go to the villa down in Southern California, Malibu, and we passed it.
You've heard about the Getty?
Yeah, the Getty, when we'd gone to the wedding. But I hadn't gotten there. And then, you know, I got there and it was closed. And they had closed it for quite a while. Then there was the lawsuit and trying to get art back and art going across, I don't know where, to Greece or something. And it was a long drawn out lawsuit and very nasty. And in the end, it wasn't, I didn't think really, you know, great for any parties. So I would just like to know, what was the original contract for this? Over the weekend, I spent some time trying to rally people and say, you know, are you interested? Do you care? And nobody really cared. And I said, this was a very special piece of art. And I don't know all the specifics of it. I know that they contacted the artist. But the artist really doesn't have any comment or shouldn't have any comment about where the art goes when he provided it to Santa Rosa. And Santa Rosa is having a very hard time right now handling all of their assets. And our city is having lots of challenges and it's very painful. And for us to keep our art, it's very important. Now, it could be that there is something, there's legality, there's some reason. But it's also, as I see it, it was on the sidewalk. It wasn't inside the mall. So I don't know that the mall actually has any jurisdiction over saying where it goes. And for the Geyserville people to say, gee, it's just beautiful. We can't wait to put it in our trail and enjoy it with all the public that's going to be coming to Geyserville. We need people in Santa Rosa and we need tourist attractions. And that was a real beauty. And it stood for a lot. And I'm just bringing it up today because I hope that it can rally emotions in whoever the artists are here, the people that care. I know you do because you're on this board. But I think it is a really big topic. And I don't think that people should just say, oh, well, fine, you know, and walk away from it. So anyway, that's my two cents worth. And I just feel it's really important. And I'd like to know more about it, but I'm a one-person woman here, just always trying to like, do the best I can. And I've got a lot of other things I'm working on with the city. So maybe if you'd like to leave me your phone and email, I'm happy to call you. Okay.
It isn't owned by the City of Santa Rosa. It was owned by the mall.
It was owned by the mall.
It predated our public art ordinance.
Pardon?
It predated our public art ordinance.
Oh.
So there's history there and I'm happy to talk to you about it over the phone.
Okay. Well, you're welcome to interrupt me at any time, I'll tell you. But speaking with the Press Democrat, I was hoping that maybe they could have straightened something out. And, and nobody seemed to know anything, you know, so.
We'll give you a call after.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. But it's still important art. And it was important to Santa Rosa.
Yeah, thank you very much. We appreciate you taking the time and sharing your views.
Thank you.
Meredith, that might be something for us to consider for a future agenda item. Okay, any other?
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Well, I just hope that other people care.
I think we off there, that's why we're here. Okay, any other public comments? Okay, we will move on. Thank you very much. We do appreciate you being here. Okay, we're on to item number six, approval of minutes. We actually have two sets of minutes because we had an issue with access to the February minutes for approval last time. Oh, wait a minute, before I move on. I didn't see this as an agenda item, but we do have a new member, and this was actually on the agenda last.
It's going to be of department reports.
Oh, it's under department.
I'm going to do that under department.
Okay, I'm just going to informally say, welcome very much, welcome, you know, to our committee. And we'll do formal welcome as Meredith just indicated. Okay. Approval of minutes, we are first going to review and approve the February 2025 minutes because we didn't do it at the last meeting, and then we'll move on to April. Were, are, did everybody read the February minutes and does anybody have any corrections or changes? Okay, being that we do not have any corrections or additions or changes, the minutes will be accepted as written. Okay, the April minutes, any corrections, additions, or changes? I actually have a couple of things. Under item number seven, department reports, oh, I should have known this. That's what he did last, last month. The way this is worded, since Arts and Culture Coordinator, Meredith Knudsen, welcomed the new chair of me and the new committee member, Nancy Trejo Vasquez. Nancy was not actually present, but it is worded in such a way that it suggests that she was present. So maybe changing welcome. I would suggest the wording and announced the appointment of new committee member. And then, in the item number 10, under committee reports, I reported on the upcoming exhibition at Paradise Ridge Winery. It is not featuring the work of Walter Bick and Marika Bick Consular, but is actually it's a work of multiple, it's, I'm curating an exhibition of multiple artists celebrating Walter Bick and Marika Consular. So it's in celebration of them. And I'll just mention, although I don't know that it's necessary for the minutes, that they were the visionaries who created the sculpture and art program at Paradise Ridge. And so that's really what the exhibition is recognizing. Does anybody else have any corrections, additions, or changes to the minutes? Okay. Then, do we need to vote on minutes being?
We do.
Okay, the minutes are submitted with those corrections. All right.
I'm sorry, Mickey. I've got a turn.
Okay. Shouldn't I be looking at the last?
Yes.
Last, okay, we are up to item number seven, scheduled items.
Department reports.
I think because we moved department.
Oh, yeah, okay, sorry. I wrote that down here, but it's department reports.
Thank you. Well, I would like to welcome Committee Member Vasquez to the Art in Public Places Committee. Nancy, would you like to maybe say a few words, introduce yourself?
Yeah, I can. I'm Nancy. I was born, born and raised here in Santa Rosa. I grew up in Roseland and went through the, all the Roseland schools, and then I left to go to school at SF State. And then the pandemic happened, so then I had to move back and finish online. But now I'm back and I currently work for Burbank Housing. And I'm, I'm happy to be here. I'm excited.
Welcome.
Yeah, we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Should we each introduce ourselves, just so Nancy knows who we are? Debelle.
My name's Debelle Faulkner. And I am an artist and I've been on this committee for a little over two years, I think. Nice to meet you.
I am Jeff Nathanson. I'm an independent curator and arts management consultant, formerly the director of the Museum of Sonoma County.
Kristin Kiefer, I'm a community organizer. I am currently working on the bike in Block 30 and we'll give more information about that coming up this weekend, so. Thanks.
Hi, I'm Nathan Ashdarian. Been on this committee since 2020.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
Great.
Great, yeah, thank you.
Any other department reports? Okay, now back to item number seven, scheduled items. Meredith?
Yes, thank you. Today, Maria Uribe from Art Start will be presenting his proposal for Art Start with the Brooklyn mural. The selection panel met, maybe it was, was it two weeks ago, three weeks ago, and selected Art Start as the finalist. So today, we'll be seeking your approval for this mural for Brooklyn mural. I will go ahead and share his presentation if you both could. Here, one second.
Make sure it's green. There it is. Even I thought through the presentation.
Just make sure we're sharing our correct screen here. Perfect. Now we can see it.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mario Uribe and I'm an artist. What did I say? I used to be very involved with Art Start, and so they call on me for Italian help from time to time. And this is one of the times. This project of, I don't know if all of you have seen the wall. It's a corrugated steel wall on Brookwood Avenue where the Leafs Department parks their cars. And it's sort of foreboding right now. So I guess the city wanted to embellish it a little bit. There wasn't, well, there isn't a lot of money, so coming up with an idea for, it wasn't like you could paint a mural as such on the piece. So for many, many years, probably 20 some years, Art Start had been working with a product named polytab, which is a fabric that you can paint on. It's very flexible and you can just glue it onto a wall. And it's, it can be on wood or, or stucco or steel. And we've done a lot of it. And so that seemed to me like it was the most apt material to work with. Besides that, the kids, which are, which are all mostly high school, can work at our facility, the Art Start facility, and create the artwork there. And they just go and, and install it with some supervision. One artist, one lead artist could supervise a whole bunch of kids. If you're on site on a very busy street, it would have required probably more than one artist to supervise and then all the kids. Cars were going by there, heavy traffic, so. The solution that I found was to paint something on the polytab. And it had to be simple and read fast for people driving by. It's not a walking street. There aren't a lot of people just walking to and from. So it's mostly traffic, car traffic. And see, you gave me some images.
You flip through our slides.
You can, I'm not a computer. Oh, that's okay. You can just hit the next era.
Anyway, we can talk. You can use your imagination.
You may have to scroll.
So. Yeah, we needed to come up with a graphic element. I see you. It's all on there, but you can read it. A very recognizable symbol for Santa Rosa is the rose. And it could be a fun sort of subject matter for painting. Maybe not directly on the metal, but on this polytab fabric. And so, since 1894, the Rose Parade has been a big part of the city. Everybody's familiar. They know that Santa Rosa means St. Rose. And so anyway, it's become an icon in the City of Santa Rosa. And the City of Santa Rosa logo has a rose, a very stylized rose in it. So I came up with the idea of doing roses on the polytab that would be painted at our facility and then installed. This is just a very basic idea of what it could be. It could be very colorful. And that looks like the same rose over and over, but there are lots of different kind of roses and lots of different ways to, to to paint one. So it wouldn't be very, very detailed because it would be lost on people driving by. But it would be strong contrast, very colorful, more, more foliage, maybe the in the back. I did some, I think I did some drawings that had more detail on there, but.
I don't think it was included.
No, it wasn't included in this presentation. So there, there would be more more variety, so they wouldn't all look the same. There are, you know, thousands of varieties of roses and look at the Burbank, it's instrumental in creating a lot of them. So do we know how long this wall is? I forgot. It's over 100 feet, maybe close to 200.
We did look at that during the committee review.
Yeah. Anyway, I'm not sure how many, but if, once we have it to scale drawing, we can really design and using roses of different sizes. Also, some of the roses could be on, besides this fabric, could be adhered to anywhere on this wall. Some of them could go above the wall and they could be painted on, on MDO board, that's Jeff's, and then attached here and there. So it would break up the monotony of the flat line containing the painting. I'm not sure what else I can tell you, other than it would utilize quite a few kids. Actually, it says here, Art Start has over 25 years creating murals. It does, and almost all of that time, they've been, really were created on on this fabric and then attached to walls. And most of them are still there after all this time. So it's very durable and you can't, it looks like it's painted on the wall regardless of the surface. So and it, it can be done, oh, here's some variations, more Andy Warhol-ish looking roses. So there's a lot of varieties. And so it's important for our program, the Art Start program, to involve kids in every aspect because, because we want to. It's all about training young artists and teaching them how to get things done. And so how to deal with a wall like this and how to paint things. And you want them to be involved in designing as well. So, and to design within their, their means, maybe challenge themselves a little bit. But so this just shows variation though. This is one rose that's painted three different ways. So that's basically the idea. We would fine tune the design. Here's some, some flowers that were painted on this fabric. You could see, I'm not sure if they included some images. You can get very large. You can just fill a whole wall. The Hattery on Pedalum Hill Road right now has a mural that was painted mostly on the polytab that has stars. Each one was done separately and then just stuck on the wall. And that's a it's a wood wall, but it, wood, combination wood, but it looks like metal.
That's your last slide that you have.
Yeah, that's all the slides. So anyway, it's, it's very basic. And we welcome any, any comments, what might make it better. We can't put a lot of detail on it because it's we're not going to paint the Sistine Chapel for $1,000.
It's 255 feet.
Yeah, 255, that's a lot.
That's long.
So there you are.
Maria, thank you very much for presenting and being here, taking the time to share the project proposal with us. So this is recommended by the review committee for approval by this committee. And I was a member of that review committee. Do any of the ATPC committee members have any questions for the artist or about the project proposal at this time? Nathan?
I want to comment.
We'll have comments once we have a motion on the floor to approve. Okay, if the committee doesn't have any questions, then public comments? Yes?
I wonder if you could have text. I've been thinking of some kind of dome-like thing in Santa Rosa that welcomed people to Santa Rosa, something that was a little different and unique. If it could have text on it, and since it's such a long wall and you were talking about the logo and the rose and the theme, if it could be stretched out or abstracted in some way where the whole thing would say something like, Santa Rosa welcomes you. And then that would be the 255 feet. And then the flowers could be however you do the flowers. But having some text on it, would that be hard?
It wouldn't be difficult. It could be done, except that I'm not sure that anyone coming into Santa Rosa was traveling on the street.
Yeah, I see.
It's on Brooklyn.
Near the playgrounds, yeah, between downtown and. You could put that over a freeway overpass.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, it's just, it's been in my mind and I'm thinking 235 feet, you know.
There's been some efforts that I remember over the last 30 years about doing something like that, but it's never.
Entry gateways to cities are, you know, that's a really important consideration. I'm not sure Santa Rosa has done a very good job of that yet, but thank you. Okay. I think at this point, we need a motion to approve this mural and a second in order for us to have a committee discussion. Is there a, a motion to approve?
Oh, make motion to approve.
I will second.
The Brooklyn mural.
Okay, Debelle has, has moved and Kristin has seconded to approve the recommendation of the Brookwood mural project by Art Start. Okay, the floor is open for comments and questions. Nathan, I think you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I think this is an elegant solution to a visual problem. My reservations are related to the questions of militarization of civic infrastructure and the extent to which public art can be called upon to make that more palatable. My feeling is that this perimeter looks foreboding because it is foreboding. And in this particular instance, it might be more appropriate for the department to handle its, its own sort of public relations visual culture as opposed to framing it as a public art project.
Interesting comment.
And that's my, just my feeling.
So I will share that there were representatives from the Police Department on the review committee. And one of them in particular was really very interested in trying to bridge this gap between the Police Department and public perception of what the Police Department is and to try to connect to community. And I, I don't know. I, I don't really have a, a strong opinion about whether public art is a good vehicle through which Police Department can try to bridge that gap. I, I do respect that the Santa Rosa Police worked in concert with the Low Rider Council, for example, a few years ago in order to create a low rider patrol car. And, and I think there was some value to that. But, you know, I think we all have, you know, our, our own opinions and relationships with police. I mean, I won't talk about my own youth, but there were times. So I would say as, as a member of the review committee, the input of the officers and administrators from the Police Department who were part of the process, I think there was a real sincerity there to try to do something to have their presence be less ominous.
Yeah, if I could just add, some years back, we, after the Andy Lopez incident, the, some neighbor, neighborhood people in Roseland asked Art Start to, to help some of the kids in the neighborhood paint some murals that dealt with that. And the whole thing was sponsored by, by the Police Department. And they wanted, they had police officers coming out and working with the kids painting this. And they wanted, they had police officers coming out and working with the kids painting this. It, there was flowers and, I don't know, some simple stuff, you know? And, but the, uh, the neighborhood really resented that. In fact, when I, uh, finished, uh, painting a mural, enlarging a mural about Andy Lopez in, in the Roseland Parking, uh, Shopping Center, some of those people came up and said, you know, we saw what happened on, whatever the name of that street is, Main Street, I think. And we don't want it to happen here. We don't wanna see images of police officers. They really were very strongly opposed. I mean, a lot of people. I, I redid them, you know, I redid it and took out all the, all the police officers out. And, uh, so anyway, so the community does have strong feelings about that. This, I don't think anyone would object to roses. Because there are roses that in fact in the past have been a symbol of peace and healing. So, uh,
Thank you for that. I, I know during the committee, uh, the review committee discussion, uh, there was, uh, I would say across the board enthusiasm for working with Art Start and having youth be participants in the creation of this public art. And, uh, that, that goes for the, um, police officers who were there. I think they, they liked that idea. But, uh, I would, I, I respect your opinion a lot, Mario. I mean, I, I, I assume that Art Start applying for this public art project opportunity on the, uh, you know, the police two-hundred-and-fifty-five-foot fence. It's something that you, you really want to do and that it's something you think will contribute to the community.
Have a comment? Mario, thank you for coming to our committee today and talking with us. Uh, I would also had the opportunity to sit on the selection committee panel and, through that conversation, really had like a nice weigh-in of what would make this space more welcoming and really wanting to break up the, I guess, brutalist feeling of the stark fence there. And so I really think that the opportunities to create on pendulations up and down and, and to really make it so the fence line is not just straight across was a great conversation. I think Polytab is a great tool to be using in, in this application. So I was glad for that, um, presentation before our committee. And wanted to reiterate, um, that we had talked about different size of leaves to help fill in the empty space since it is a very long mural space. I really like the idea of not necessarily having something continuous, but that attracts your eye in different places throughout, uh, in lieu of, um, to really fill out the space. So I thought that was interesting and really liked that there was the conversation with the police department and the director from Art Start to say that they are working, are open to working with at-risk use, youth, uh, specifically for this project as well. So breaking down, um, some of the perceived barriers in our community.
Want to be a part of it.
I think that would be a great opportunity. I see art, public art in this opportunity as a vehicle to really reach over, uh, boundaries and, and within different departments or, um, kind of silos that have been perceived. So I think that this is a really great opportunity that public art has to weigh in on uh, softening the look at a certain space. So I think that this is a great opportunity as presented and we look forward to seeing more, um, details kind of filled in and then the artistic elements to the roses to make them pop. So, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. As we know, public art really, uh, can create a sense of place wherever it, wherever you find it. And, uh, the current sense of place in that particular block is, um, it's unattractive, it's unwelcoming, and I think, uh, from my perspective, this, this, uh, art project will, as you say, it, it, it will beautify and, and soften the harshness of that particular fence. So, um, I'm, I'm for it. I, I thought that, uh, our discussion with the review selection committee was really intelligent and, uh, and there was a lot of integrity in, in that discussion. And that's why the committee recommends it to APPC for, for approval. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, uh, then I think it's time for a vote. So it has been moved by Debbo Faulkner to approve the, uh, Brookwood mural project as recommended by the committee. Uh, the project, um, is from, uh, Art Start. And it has been seconded by Kristen Kiefer. Okay, Jack, would you call for a vote, please?
Absolutely. Chair Nathanson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kiefer?
Aye.
Committee Member Faulkner?
Aye.
Committee Member Trejo Vazquez?
Aye.
And Committee Member Azadarian?
Nay.
Uh, let the record reflect that the motion passes with four ayes and one nay.
Okay. Democracy in action. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
You're welcome to stand.
Oh, I gotta go. Get back to work.
You're the application now. All right. Thanks. Nice to meet you.
Thanks for coming. Okay, we are moving on to item number seven point two, the temporary art walk. Meredith, please ready for presentation?
Yes, um, I don't have any attachments for this one, I believe I did. Yeah. So, thank you Chair Nathanson. Um, I am excited to move forward with the temporary art walk. Um, we had, I'll give a little background again of the art walk, um, since Committee Member Trejo Vazquez wasn't here for that. Uh, we opened up the hall, um, in, sorry, I don't have that. The deadline was in April, so I believe we opened that in February. Um, for public art to be placed temporarily downtown in Railroad Square for up to two years, um, in hopes to install these around September. Uh, the theme was urban renewal. This initiative aims to transform our downtown into a vibrant opener gallery that celebrates creativity and sparks imagination. The Santa Rosa Public Art Walk goals are to foster civic excitement, to encourage creativity, to support artistic growth, transform public spaces, and to offer learning experiences. This call was opened, um, nationally, sent to all US-based artists, and each artist will be receiving a stipend of five thousand dollars. Um, and that stipend would include, um, insurance, install, de-install, travel, et cetera. Um, I'm happy to announce we received a hundred and two submissions. Uh, so that's really exciting from all over the US, mainly West Coast states, um, but we did get some Chicago and East Coast as well. So today, um, I am, uh, the recommended action is to select one to two APPC members for a selection panel. Uh, this selection panel will first do a first round of virtual scoring, um, hopefully by starting next week for, um, about two weeks. So in May, we'll be doing the virtual scoring and then we'll be looking to in-person, um, either end of May or beginning of June to do the final selection. And we're looking to select up to ten artists, um, for this. Uh, I'm, I'm hoping to bring this back ideally for the June meeting, and if not, we may do a special meeting for approval as, uh, we need to get the contracts started and get the installs, um, ideally in September. So I'll open that up to you, and if we could select one to two APPC members for the selection panel, that would be wonderful.
Great, thanks Meredith. Um, okay, wow, a hundred and two submissions. That's, that's really good. Okay, uh, does anybody have any questions about the temporary, um, art walk project?
I have a question. Uh, so you said selecting up to ten artists? Was there create, or is there stated criteria for how many works we will be?
On our call, um, and in our project plan, we put up to ten.
Okay.
Um, the reason why I'm saying up to is that, um, depending on locations that we choose, which will be, um, reviewed with the selection panel as well. We'll see what fits, right? I, um, it's really important not to just plop art somewhere. So, uh, we may end up choosing eight for the walk, right? We will wanna also choose about three or four alternates, um, as sometimes you contact the artist and the art may be going elsewhere. So, um, again, whatever is, um, chosen by the selection committee will be brought back to you for final approval.
Great. And you said September is the target?
To install.
Um, I think I, it was just yesterday that I saw an announcement of the Railroad Square Music Festival. It's taking place in September this year. Um, so, oh, that's right, Kristen, you're involved with that, right? So just, uh, to, I guess a question about whether, um, you're considering the installation schedule relative to that festival?
The festival's on a Sunday. Um, installs always have to happen on a Monday through Friday. And then it's also up to the, um, artist availability and the site, um, because we do a special event permit for every installation and de-installation. So we look at the calendar.
So is it desirable to have the art installed before the festival? Or is it better to wait until after the festival?
We'll see what's chosen. Yeah. I mean, we have a, we have a lot going on and there'll always be a lot going on downtown. So it's exciting.
Be interested to see how that, uh,
Yeah.
maps out.
Especially if it's installed before, just thinking about a crowd of people interacting around the artwork.
Yeah.
Extra safety measures may need to be put in place or.
You know, it's the public art and that's something we'll look at as a selection, um, panel and committee is that, um, there'll be people interacting with it for two years. So the placement will be key with a lot of the events that we have that happen downtown. So we'll have to, we'll, we'll walk through that and think that out as well, which I've been, I've been mapping that my process to us.
Okay, great, thanks. Um, any other questions from committee members? Okay, any public comments or questions? Yes?
I just wonder what happens after the two years with the art?
I thought it's artist-owned, so then they de-install it and take it back. We're not, we're not purchasing the artwork. So it's a temporary loan.
Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, do we have any volunteers to, um, I guess ideally two volunteers for the selection panel for this particular project? Kristen sheepishly raises her.
And one is okay. I know we have a lot going on.
I'm gonna be doing a lot of traveling in May and June, so not available to help them.
Yeah, I, I, I'm actually really interested in this, but I have, uh, a, a big exhibition opening in early June and then another project in July. So it's, I'm not sure I'll have the.
And one is okay. I do have another city, a city employee, um, on it. Um, we have, um, the mall. And that will be a site as well. And we'll have, um, the D A O and we have Railroad Square Association. So there, there'll be multiple representatives on it. Um, so one is okay.
Right. And anybody else in the committee want to volunteer? Might be worth reaching out to, um, Lisa also to see if she's interested. Okay, um, since we haven't really nailed down which committee members other than Kristen might be, should, I'm gonna suggest that we table the vote for until the next meeting, or can we just, uh, accept the volunteers?
Uh, what, what I believe you could do is do that you're, um, selecting, um, Committee Member Kiefer, um, as a representative, um, along with, um, Lisa. And if Lisa does not wanna do that, she doesn't have to do it.
Okay.
That would work, right? Or Jack?
Yeah, that's, I think that's sort of.
Okay, so, um.
She doesn't wanna serve, that's okay.
Okay, so, um, let's, uh, have a motion to appoint Kristen and, uh, Kristen and Lisa as, uh, selection committee members for the temporary art walk. Um, is there a motion to that effect?
I move to select Kristen and Lisa.
Okay, Debbo Faulkner has moved to, uh, appoint Kristen Kiefer and Lisa Puentes to the selection committee for the temporary art walk. Is there a second?
I second.
Great. Uh, Nancy has seconded, uh, the, okay, um, committee questions and comments? Okay.
Um, I have a quick comment.
Yeah.
I am very interested to see the submissions that have, uh, come in so far regarding this theme, urban renewal. I think that there's a lot of opportunity here and this could be a really fun project to tie in themes of, you know, um, just how we interact with our space. And I think that urban renewal is a really fun theme for this, and I hope that we, as a selection panel, have thoughtful discussions about what this theme actually means for our, for our community, for our community currently at this point. So. I think that's cool.
Great, thanks Kristen. Uh, anybody else? Okay, let's, uh, bring the, the motion to a vote. Uh, it has been moved and seconded to appoint Kristen Kiefer and Lisa Puentes to the selection panel for the temporary art walk project. Jack, will you call the vote?
Absolutely. Chair Nathanson?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kiefer?
Aye.
Committee Member Faulkner?
Aye.
Committee Member Trejo Vazquez?
Aye.
And Committee Member Azadarian?
I would the proviso that Lisa decides whether or not she wants to purchase.
Yeah, I think we're approving her to do it if she can't or doesn't have a certificate. If she can't, rather than, yes. All right, so let the record reflect that the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, uh, let's move on to item seven point three, the arts and culture update.
There we go. Thank you. That's always one of my favorite, um, sections of the agenda because we have, um, a lot of really good things going on. And we have a lot of support, um, from other members of our economic development team and a lot of these initiatives. So we're moving right along. See, if I can, there we go. All right. Live at Juilliard, it is our thirtieth anniversary this year, which we are really excited about. Uh, we expect to announce the bands this month. We're just waiting for the contracts to be finalized to, to get those names out there of who was chosen. Um, this will be every Sunday, um, starting July twenty-seventh through August thirty-first. And, uh, we have opened up a call for art vendors this year, um, to celebrate the thirtieth anniversary. So we are looking for about four or five vendors for the shows. Um, I'm encouraging youth to apply. I think that would be really great. There's, there's no charge for the booth space. They just need to bring their own setup. Uh, we won't be providing that. Um, so it's a really great opportunity for artists, uh, to get their artwork and sell, um, and it's a great community. I'll also be coming back with this item, um, looking for volunteers this year to, uh, volunteer for the art booth, uh, information booths with me. So. Community promotions. Um, community promotions funding is for community events, uh, events focusing on community cul- culture or providing a community service. Um, and this is currently open until May fifteenth, um, for events that happen between July one through June thirtieth. And I'm bringing that here to you as a lot of art events and, and our community, um, related. They support a community culture. So if you know of anyone that would be interested in applying for this funding, um, please let them know that it closes on May fifteenth. We have two art exhibits currently at Finley Center. Uh, the artists of Becoming Independent, uh, are showing at the Person Senior Wing. And that is through June eighteenth. And then we have quilters, um, up until June twenty-seventh in the main hall. Um, so I'd encourage you to, uh, go and see this wonderful art that is at Finley Center. Three of the, uh, youth winners from the National Arts Program were featured on North Bay Arts Briefs. So I'd encourage you to go on to that link, um, and listen to those artists. We also have some of the winners that will be displayed in our business lounge, um, across the street for the next year. So that will be a rotating art show now. Um, after the National Arts Program, we'll be taking some of the winners over there and rotating that out as well, um, and putting out artist bios, et cetera, for them in the business lounge. We've been doing some social media, um, advertising specifically for the art walk. Um, but we've also been, um, posting a lot of the art that we have going on and, and people have been responding. Um, for the April, um, we had a hundred, over a hundred and twenty-nine thousand Facebook. Um, for the April, um, we had a hundred, over a hundred twenty-nine thousand Facebook views and almost ten thousand Instagram views. Um, we had some large reaches, almost ninety thousand, four thousand on Instagram, a lot of interactions and um, link clicks. Um, the Big Belly Trash Cans actually were um, very highly commented on and it was really nice and refreshing to read through of the appreciation from the community members to see the art in Roseland on that. So um, for me, that was really encouraging, um, and I'm sure for the artists as well. Um, also online, we'll be posting a lot of events that we have coming up this month for May. Uh, we have Sueno's Market, SoCo Market, Cinco de Mayo, which is today, Rose Parade, Bike and Block Party, Railroad Square Antique Fair, Sunday Farmer's Market, uh, Wednesday Night Market and Pride. So those are just some of the May events that we have going on, which is um, really exciting for our community. And that is my update for this meeting.
Excellent, thank you.
Could you remind us when the uh, antique fair in Railroad Square is?
Eighteen, it's the same day as the farmer's market.
It's about the eighteen, okay.
The same day as the first day of the farmer's market.
Okay.
I think we were talking about it to be sure.
I think I will check.
Yeah, I found my calendar too. Soon as I can, I can Google it real quick too, just to fact check myself, but I'm pretty sure. Yeah, it is same day, okay.
Okay, any other questions um, regarding Meredith's um, arts and culture update? Hey, any public comment? Hey, there are none. Uh, thank you, Meredith. That's a great report. Uh, we're gonna move on to item number eight, committee reports. Uh, does anybody on the committee have anything to uh, report or share? Um, you're welcome to make general comments or announcements at this time.
I have.
Kristen?
Thanks, Jack. Uh, quick plug for the Bike and Block Party is happening this Saturday. I have a couple extra posters if anyone wants one. Uh, two to seven PM, we are shutting down Fourth Street between B Street and Mendocino Avenue. And during this event, we will have uh, free bike, bike repair clinics, on bike games. There'll be a bike blender organized by the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, arts and crafts. I will be facilitating a large community-wide mural being painted at the event. Um, so come check out the Santa Rosa Urban Arts Booth where I'll be. Um, and we're gonna have face painting, also booths set up with a number of our partners, including Safe Routes to School, Go Sonoma, um, and beer is being donated by Hen House Brewing Company. And this is an event put on by Bicable Santa Rosa, the Sonoma County Bicycle Coalition, and in partnership with the City of Santa Rosa. So it's really taking a lot of um, group effort to put this on. And we'll have some great live music events with the Santa Rosa Youth Marimba Band, Rascuates, and Late for the Train will have a couple of music performances. So it should be a really fun festival and event. I encourage everyone to come. Please come on a bike or alternative transportation if available. All are welcome. Streets are closed to cars, but open to fun. Thank you.
Great.
That's my plug.
Thanks, Kristen. I'm curious, is the uh, Youth Marimba Band, is that the outfit out of um, LBC Luther Burbank Center?
I'm not sure who they're associated with. I just know that they previously played at the Winter Blast Festival.
Oh, yeah.
You were there for that this.
Cool.
Earlier in November.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other announcements? Um, uh, last month I shared that uh, the exhibition I curated of the muralist public artist, uh, John Worley is on view at the Richmond Art Center. I mistakenly announced that it was on the, on view through June seventh. It's actually through June fourteenth, so you have a whole extra week. It's interesting hearing about the uh, the fence uh, for that Brookwood mural project being two hundred fifty-five feet long because I think that's about this, the length of the largest mural that John Worley painted, which was uh, in LA for the nineteen eighty-four Olympics. Um, an iconic mural that's on the one oh one freeway. Anyway, uh, if anybody would like um, an announcement card, if you're making it to the East Bay, Kristen, I know you came to the opening. Thank you very much. So uh, it's a fantastic show and um, uh, if anybody uh, is making it to the East Bay, I hope you'll see it. And then I'll also remind uh, everybody that June fifteenth is the opening date of the sculpture exhibition at Paradise Ridge coming up. And uh, once I have printed cards, I will bring them to the meeting, which I'll, I guess, be next month. Yeah, anyway, uh, that's it for my announcements. Uh, anybody else? Anything more? Okay, that's it. So we'll move on to, oh, department reports. We did, I moved that up, so it's, we can amazingly move on to adjournment. Um, is there any, any uh, final remarks or comments or questions that anybody has before we adjourn today? Then I think that wraps it up. Once again, we did it within an hour, less than an hour. We're doing great. All right, um, this meeting is adjourned. The next regular meeting of the Art and Public Places Committee is scheduled for Monday, June second, twenty twenty-five. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.